I'd like to call our June 3 Stanley County Board of Commissioners regular meeting to order, and I would like to welcome those in attendance. If you are planning to watch this on YouTube, you won't be able to do it today, but you should be able to do it tomorrow. We're working on some software that we need upgraded, and hopefully that will correct the YouTube situation to where you can watch it at the time of meeting. At this time, I would like to recognize Vice Chairman Mike Barbie for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Y'all like this? Please bow our heads. Our Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for a beautiful day today, and we want you to bless the board and their decisions we have to make, and hope that we do that in every way to honor you and to bless the citizens of this county, and also bless the military, our friends in Israel, and to bring everybody home safely. For the military, please bless the police, fire, and rescue, and all of our educators. We thank you, Lord. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) are the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Barbie, for the prayer and the invocation. At this time, we have public comments, and we do have two citizens that have signed up. And the first is Dr. Jared Dennis. I believe Dr. Dennis is going to come and talk about the school budget. And Dr. Dennis, I'll remind you and any other speaker, please try to keep your comments to three minutes, and we appreciate what you're going to talk about.
Yeah, it'll be short. I just want to make sure this is the right way of doing this. I didn't know if there's going to be another part later. If there is, I'd be glad to yield my time. If not, I'd be glad to move forward. Okay, I couldn't find any. Would you rather hear it now or during that? Okay, well, thank you. So I just wanted to just take just a few minutes of your time, and I saw what the planned budget allocation for the school system was, and just to give a couple updated figures on some stuff as far as, I know there's an extra million dollars for the school system. But a couple things I'm going through right now is I'm going to get a Title I cut. I don't know what that is, but that does pay for personnel, some of it. And so I know I'm getting a cut, everyone's getting a cut, but it's federal money. Sometimes you find out about it later, so I can't tell you what that is. Our classified pay scale that we have to institute, right now it's 1.125 million dollars. We won't have to pay for all of that. There's some that come through the state, but we have a lot of local people that we will have to pay for it. So we're estimating at least half of that at 500, and this is conservative, $562,500 that has to come off the top so that we can institute the state's pay scale because it is mandated. We also have a salary we have to pay to that doesn't come out of the state. It comes out local, but the transportation mechanic salary is $62,000. That's what benefits and all. We have to have it on our fleet vehicle, so all of our non-yellow school buses and all the other vehicles, we have to have that position. Our local employees' hospitalization cost to the state has increased to an extra $26,900 as well. We're also looking at the funding effort. The funding effort from the county is down this year at 1.5%, so we're going to lose $172,612 of low-wealth money. And this actually went down every year from 78.2% to 70.2%, so it's 2122. So before I even start looking at my budget, I'm down $824,000, 824 and $12, trying to speak fast. And then I still don't know what my Title I cut is. So we're just looking at those as far as our funding, and any additional funding would help because that comes right off the top. There's nothing I can control about that. I have to do it. And only two other things I would just ask the board to do is in your budget transmital letter, when you're going with the per-people allotment, the numbers aren't used, they're not coming from the right areas. I mean, they could be higher, they could be lower, but the current expense numbers aren't right, and the per pupils aren't right for '23, '24, and '24, '25 because it all comes out of child nutrition, and those numbers aren't generated yet. And the child nutrition actually is a way a lot of this is figured. So you have to go out of those reports to figure it out. And the other thing is, there is a, and I'd like to talk about this later, I'll leave it at this, and I'm done, is the enhanced education literacy, the 25% increase to teacher supplement grant funding at $100,000. I called two other superintendents from school districts that are, they have a lot of experience in how you increase teacher supplements, and they've really never heard of this mechanism for how this is done. I got some really good ideas on how we can do it, but I really need millions of dollars to increase it. At $100,000, and I've got 640 teachers, that means I'm giving every teacher another $15 a month. That's pre-tax. After tax, they make and go to Starbucks. So it's just not as much money as it looks like on paper, and I just wanted to make sure the public saw that. And again, any additional funding would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Graves signed up to talk about Title 11 or Title I?
Title IX. Title IX. I was writing fast to get under the wire things. So thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I just wanted to bring something to your attention that is not necessarily news now, but it's going to be something that you're going to have to confront in the coming years, and that is an update to Title IX by the Biden Administration. And Title IX was passed in 1972 to protect women and provide equal opportunity to women in sports and other educational opportunities. The Biden Administration has redefined the term sex as it is defined in Title IX to also include gender identity and getting away from the focus on biological sex. So consequently, as they've updated the Title IX rules that are going to go into effect this August and impact the Stanley County school system and all other school systems in the nation, it means that our school system is going to have to deal with the issue of pronouns. It's going to have to deal with the issue of non-biological males going into female bathrooms and locker rooms, participating, non-biological females or males competing in women's sports potentially. I'm bringing this to your attention because it's a topic the school board is going to have to address, but their funding comes from you. And so I'm putting this on your radar so that you can at least, at the back of your mind earmark some of the money in the fund balance to be allocated towards a legal fund because there's no way, obviously, the school system is going to be able to defend themselves against any type of a Title IX lawsuit if they want to stand up to the new Title IX rule without your support. So I just wanted to make you aware of that because I think it's something you will have to deal with in the future. Thank you.
Just follow all of the schools, charter schools.
Yeah. Well, any school that's receiving federal funding. Yeah. So, yeah.
And this goes into effect when?
August.
Of this year?
This year.
And it's federal?
Yes.
This is coming down?
Yep. Thanks.
Thank you. Item number two, '24, '25 budget, public hearing and workshop dates. We've already selected the workshop dates, which will be, somebody, it was April, not April, yeah, June the 5th at 4:00 p.m., and June the 13th at 4:00 p.m., and then on June the 18th at 9:00 a.m. So those dates and times are open to the citizens, general public. Thank you, Andy.
Yes, sir. You're required by General Statute 15912 to hold a public hearing to consider comments related to the annual recommended budget. And so the public hearing is scheduled for this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Before I hit the hammer, are there any questions of Andy? Don't see any. I'm going to declare the public hearing open, and anyone that would like to come before the Board of Commissioners in favor of our budget or not in favor of our budget, please come forward. And Dr. Dennis, if you want to come up here and talk to us some more, you're more than welcome to.
I said everything. Thank you, Mr. Sir.
I declare the public hearing closed. Okay, item number three, Stanley County Comprehensive Transportation Plan update. And the presenter is Mr. Lee Snuggs, our Rocky River RPO Director. Mr. Snuggs?
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you for your time for seeing us. I'm actually going to hand it over to Roger Castillo with NC DOT. He drove in from Raleigh to discuss this. Most of you probably are aware, I know Mr. Law has come to one of our CTP meetings. This is, Roger will give you more detail, but this is an important document that basically lays out our future plans for how we want basically Stanley County to advance in the future. So it is a paper document, but it's something very important because any projects we want to see taken on by DOT, one of the first questions they're going to ask is, is it in your CTP, your Comprehensive Transportation Plan? So we just try to forecast where and how we want to see Stanley County develop into the future. Your input is greatly appreciated and needed, and we do have a survey that Roger's going to detail about, you know, that's open to the public as well. If I handle Roger, he'll give you more details.
Thank y'all for your time today. My name is Roger Castillo. I'm from NC DOT's Transportation Planning Division. It's the, I'm going to have to log in, it looks like. I don't know how to log in. Um, oh. Can you guys see the presentation? I don't know if, so. Oh, there you go. Okay. Thank you. So I'll just kind of explain a little bit. I'll try to keep the acronyms low because I know they can be really confusing. But basically what Lee was talking about is what we call the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And it's basically a plan that's done, it's updated every about 10 years or so. So Stanley County does have one currently, and we're currently working on updating the current one. And I'll just kind of go through it and see, and let y'all know kind of like what it is, and then just kind of the current like public engagement opportunity that's going on right now. So as I mentioned, it's called CTP or Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and it's basically a long-range multimodal plan that looks into the future, 25 to 30 years, to kind of try to predict where your transportation needs are. And it's also a vision plan. So this does incorporate a lot of your local plans as well, whether it's your land use plan and any goals. And it's also developed cooperatively with the RPO, with anyone from, any stakeholders that wants to be part of the steering committee, as well as NC DOT. So, and we do try to engage the public as much as we can throughout the process as well. It is, it is a general statute that it is needed as any area not within NPO needs to have a comprehensive transportation plan as well. So what's in the CTP? The CTP covers different modes of transportation, so vehicular, you know, cars, public transportation, bicycle, pedestrian, and it looks at the traffic volumes where, it also looks at, you know, where are some safety issues, crashes, things like that. So it kind of takes a look at different aspects of each of the different modes of transportation, both existing and future. So what are the benefits of a CTP? It is coordinated with the local growth plan, so we do, we will eventually come back here as well to kind of verify some of the population growth as well here to get you guys' approval on that. And also, it is, it serves as a guide to what kind of project recommendations get submitted later on down the process for funding. So that's why it is a very important plan. It is also a long-range vision plan for this area as it kind of takes into consideration your local plans as well. Just a general timeline, I'm not going to spend too much time with this because it can be a little much, but basically initially we start gathering a lot of the base information, what does the traffic look like, where are the crashes, what does the environmental data look like, things like that. And then we go into developing the vision, so we take a look at what are the existing local vision plans that you guys have, and also we do a survey where we gather public's opinion on what, how they expect to see Stanley County in the future as well. And that's currently where we are right now, is we have a survey out, and I'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation as well. Then we will analyze the data that we have, and we will also compare it to kind of some of the feedback that we get from the public, and we will perform a system analysis on all the different modes of transportation. And then we will develop recommendations based off of where, what our data says and the feedback that we get from the public, and then we will develop the draft plan, and we will go to, then we will do another round of public involvement to make sure that those recommendations, anyone has any feedback on those as well. And then we go into adopting the plan. So we go to every municipality within Stanley County, as well as come back here to get yours' approval, and then we close out. So that's kind of the overall timeline of the process, and it does take about a year to a year and a half-ish or so. So just kind of where the CTP is in the general lifecycle of a project, it's at the very beginning. So the main purpose of the CTP is to identify where there are needs in the county, where there are transportation needs. So that kind of feeds into the prioritization process, which is where projects are scored in order to see which would be considered for funding, and then it goes down the line to program development, planning, and then design and construction and maintenance. So it's at the very beginning of the step, which is kind of where projects are born. So currently, we do have a goals and objectives survey out. It is, we do have online flyers, or flyers that you can fill out the survey online. You can also fill it out in as a paper copy. Lee has several paper versions as well that you can kind of submit back to him, but we have a survey link, and we also have the QR code if you will want to scan it. We do have a few flyers out that if anyone wants them here today, they can take as well. We do ask if, you know, help spread the word. The more people that we can get feedback from, the better. And basically, the main things that this survey covers is kind of asking, you know, what you feel is important when it comes to transportation to identify. It also asks several questions of like how you feel the roads are, things like that, and also to help identify some of the problem areas. Where do we need to focus on? Where there are bad intersections that maybe, you know, we can't overlook, like it's something that we need to focus on as well, or where there's a lot of congestion, that type of stuff. We do take a look at that within our data, but it's also good to hear back from the public to make sure that we don't miss anything. So the survey will be open until July 12th. So we will be going through two different municipalities to give the same presentation as well, to spread the word as much as we can, and we would ask you that if you could please help us spread the word as well. So one last thing I wanted to mention, the CTP Steering Committee. So this is a committee of people that meets about once a month, just to kind of go through the whole process of that schedule that I mentioned before. We have them look through a lot of the maps that we develop. They kind of advise us on multiple steps in the process. They helped us come up with different plans for public involvement for this survey, and they'll be helping us in the future as well. And it does consist of multiple different stakeholders. If you know of anyone that may be interested to be a part of that as well, that maybe would like to help provide their input, just please let me or Lee Snuggs know, since, you know, we would want to get as much info as possible, as much feedback from people that are more experienced of what's going on in the local area. So just please let us know. And we do meet about, like I said, about once a month or so where we present that stuff. And we do have virtual meeting option, but definitely in person is sometimes a little bit more hands-on, so we do encourage that as well. But like I said, just like I said, please let us know because it would be very helpful. But that's pretty much all I have. Here's our contact info, me and Lee's. This is more of just an informational item to kind of let y'all know what a CTP is and to let y'all know about the current ongoing public engagement that's going on to help kind of inform that plan. But if you guys have any questions for me, just let me know. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair? Just a quick question. Have you gauged how much participation you've gotten from the community so far on the survey? Do you know how many participants?
So so far, the survey's been out for, I think, like a few weeks or so, and from when I last checked, which was last week, I think there was about 100 respondents. So we definitely want-
That's some work to do.
Yeah. But I mean, it's still pretty good, but we do want to get as much more people as possible. And we do still have a month and a half until the survey closes, so we're trying to go to as many meetings as possible to kind of help spread the word.
That's great. I'll help spread the word as well.
Thank you.
My goal was to get 6,000, and that's like 10%, which is sad to say, that's actually a very good response level. I always, you know, because this is an opportunity for, that I say to you, and you can say to your constituents, DOT is listening. If ever, ever, ever is a time when people say, nobody's going to hear me what I say, we want as much public input as we can get. So this is an opportunity.
Lee, I filled that survey out last week, and it takes less than five minutes. It doesn't take long at all, but it's very important information, you know, not only the cars, but you know, bike and ped, you know, so it's very important. So if you're out there listening, take less than five minutes to fill that out.
Stanley County is growing, and it's going to continue to grow, and so we need to stay on top of development because, again, this plan could predict what's going to happen in the next 25 years. So, but-
I was going to say, there is one more thing of note of the survey. The last slide, while completely optional, does have a place to put your email if you're interested to know further information. And something that we do is when we come back and do public engagement again, we send it to those emails directly as well. So if you want to keep staying informed, that's also another good way to know when the next public engagement is.
And the Steering Committee meets first Tuesday of every month, from 1 to 3. Actually, it'll be tomorrow, as a matter of fact. Tomorrow's meeting will be virtual, but we would love to have your input because, of course, you guys know a lot and know the most probably about this county and what's going on, what's needed, and most people in the room. So we'd appreciate all the involvement that you guys could give us as well.
I'd like to ask a quick, the website you get on is tinyurl.com/stanleyctp?
Yeah, 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 that's the website. Yeah, and if you want to just scan the QR code, that also works, whichever way you want to do it. We didn't want to give you all a bunch of gibberish, so we put a tiny URL.
If you're in the audience tonight, please take a few minutes and try to fill out this survey.
DOT is listening.
We'd appreciate it. Any other questions, comments? Thank y'all.
Would y'all like me to?
Yeah. Hand those out. Yeah. Yeah. I think every-
Thanks, Roger. Appreciate it. Take a few and I'll pass. That's good. That's good. Just going to pass a few.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Item number four, we have the Stanley County Convention Investors Bureau, CBB, appointments. The presenter is Casey Brooks, our new CBB Director. Casey? Come on up. Welcome into your new job.
Yes, thanks for having me. I just want to say good evening to our Commissioners. First and foremost, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Casey Brooks, and I am your new Executive Director for the Stanley CBB. I am a native to Stanley County with my own personal business experience and marketing knowledge within the tourism and agro-tourism industry. With my bachelor's degree in business management attained from Western Carolina, I have to say, go Cats. I do live in Western Stanley County with my husband, two boys, and two labs, and on behalf of my family, I just want to thank you for the opportunity and say hello to everyone here. I'm here tonight with our current board vacancy. I'm here to request two board member positions which are up for reappointment be filled. These are staggered three-year term positions where board members can be reappointed multiple times. The board is made up of a representative from each of the 10 municipalities with one additional from the city of Aldmarl and two representing Stanley County as a whole. The first position is a current vacancy after the resignation of Bob Rimsburg, and this appointment is up for the remaining two years of that term. I have spoken to Candace Louter, and she is willing to be considered for this position. Candace formally served on the CBB board when she was the Director of the Aggregistic Center, and then secondly, we would suggest Amanda Rolland remain on the board as she has been a great board member, participating in most meetings. In addition to giving support to the agro-civic and livestock arena, this position is up for appointment for three years. At this time, do you guys have any questions?
Believe me, anybody has questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that presentation.
Yes.
What's the desire of the County Commission Board?
I'd like to make a motion if I could do them both at one time. I request that Ms. Candace Louter be appointed as County Representative on the CBB Board of Directors to serve Mr. Runberg's unexpired term ending June 30, 2026, and that Amanda Rolland be reappointed as a County Representative for another three-year term ending June 30,
We have a first by Commissioner Schutte, a second by Commissioner Hatley. Any questions, comments before we vote? One question I do have, how often does this board meet, or do these board members meet?
We meet monthly. It's the second Wednesday of the month, and we meet from 8:30 for about an hour, 8:30 to 9:30 typically. Yes.
Thank you. All in favor of these appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Thank you. Long-awaited livestock arena. Chris, what are you sitting down for?
I mean, you ain't called my name yet.
Visual and fencing request.
Yes, sir. Well, I hope everybody's doing well tonight. I didn't really want to come up here and ask you for a bunch of money, but here we are. Here we are. So we were looking at a bunch of different things. The AV system, basically, we sent out an RPO to, yeah, RFP, excuse me, not RPO. Lee was up here, threw me off. Anyway, sent out an RFP to see if we could get some good proposals in. We received two. One was about $290,000. The other was almost $500,000. Mr. Lucas, myself, and Chad Kobel kind of went over those and tried to figure out which was going to be the best that we could go with. Smarter Systems came in, and that was the $290,000 one. We had to be a little bit creative because it's a lot of money, so we were trying to reduce that by everything that we possibly could. So we wanted to take as much away from it, but unfortunately, the majority of it was necessary as your preamps, your microphones, your speakers. The only thing that we could take away from it was two 98-inch displays. Those were, they're very expensive, number one, because they're made to be owned at all times. It's just a rotating display that was going to be inside. So that actually took away about $20,000. And from right now, what we tried to do is we took out, had some money left in my maintenance and repair line item, and we were going to put $10,000 towards it so that we could get this. It brought it down to about $260,000. And fingers crossed, nothing happens in June, so we should be good at the Ag Center. The only thing that we needed was the visual component, so the video wall was one thing that we kind of left in there so that we didn't just have an audio portion. We think that's going to be a very big selling point for us, so we were requesting that. In addition, the fencing request- point for us, so we were requesting that. In addition, the fencing request was kind of built into this as well. If you're familiar with the facility, the livestock arena itself is 120 foot by 200 foot. So we are going to have to fence in around the facility, not just the livestock arena. We're going to have to go out to Newt Road, go all the way down before the convenience center, have a 24-foot gate, and then come down to almost the Forest Service building, and then come back up, and another 24-foot gate, and then attach to the building itself. We didn't want to end up like another county I don't want to name, but their first event at their livestock arena, a cow got loose, and they had to go chase it down. Be honest with you, I'm not trying to chase cows down 24/27, so it'd be good exercise, but I don't really want to do that. But I think that will, those things will be very beneficial, especially for the livestock arena. And I think they're kind of necessary, to be honest with you. So I'm requesting that. We had a budget amendment made for Mr. Henson did the budget amendment, so if y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
It's a dollar amount for that?
All of it together?
No, for the fence.
The fence is $51,000.
Okay, and question, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The company that does the AV visual-
Yes, sir.
Where are they located?
Smarter Systems, if I'm not mistaken, they're located out of Charlotte. I think they are located out of Charlotte. Yes, sir.
How long they been in business?
Smarter Systems been in business for quite a while. Chad was one of them that recognized them. The other business, the other company that was doing it, I cannot recall his name. However, he has been selling microphones to the Agricivic Center for a while. The request just came in, almost $500,000, and I don't know how that happened. So that was a really big issue for us.
Do we have any local companies that do this type of work?
We looked out. We looked out, and we did not have any that sent in an RFP. And we sent that out, we got that together and sent that out as by law as we were supposed to.
And I understand the fencing company's a local company?
Yeah, that's Mayberry Fencing. We had a quote from Harper Fencing as well. Mayberry Fencing actually came in $1,000 less than them, and I was happy about that, because it's for, it's local. So I'm all about using as much local as possible.
Any other questions?
Mr. Longhorn, according to their website, they're from Charlotte, North Carolina, and they've been around since 2008, Smarter Systems.
Thank you, Mr. Shu To.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Chris, you say you took the 90-inch, 98-inch displays out?
Yes, sir. So that dropped it down from 290,000 to about 270,000, sir. Yes, sir.
Questions?
I know we're splitting hairs, but are we talking 270 or are we talking 290? Because in our package, it says 290.
Well, that's why we were trying to be creative. I'm trying to get it down as much as I possibly can. So it says 290, but we have, the way we're taking things out, it's 260, pretty much, with the $10,000 that I'm putting in, the 27, or the $20,000 that we were able to take out, sir.
Other questions?
Can those be added later?
Yeah, we definitely made sure that the wiring was going to be done, so that we can add them at a later date. We just wanted to make sure that we got this in, and that we could just phase everything else in. So we have the audio system, that's no problem, but the video wall is still gonna be there. Just the visuals for the displays, we figured we could do those at another time, hopefully. Yes, sir.
Other questions? It's a pleasure to board. I don't believe you're gonna get anything.
I make a motion, we approve the budget amendment for the Smarter Systems and for the fencing for Mayberry.
Okay, Commissioner Shu To made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Reifert, second motion. Any other discussion before we vote?
Since we're not gonna have, what you said, 98-inch screens, is that right?
Yes, sir. There are two 98-inch displays.
Are there gonna be any smaller sizes added?
The only, the only thing that we have currently in the proposal is a 55-inch display for presenter. So basically, it's like a mobile television that we can move around. So the presenter, when they're presenting, for instance, I think Stanley Community College might be coming for an event out there in August, they're able to move with their, look at the display without having to turn around and be like, "You see this here?" So it's gonna benefit them decently. As far as the other displays that would be coming in, those are going to be very expensive, just for the simple fact that they're required to be owned at all times. It's just a different pixelation. It's not a plasma or anything to that effect. It's just, they have to be running all the time, so it has to be just a different type. Otherwise, I'd go to Walmart and just pick one.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Congratulations on your new job.
Hey, thank you very much. Excited for you guys to get to come out there. We've got some, we've got a Border Collie show coming up in July, and we've got some different events that are starting. So we've got the contracts and everybody, and the fee schedule finalized, so we're excited about it. Can't wait to get you guys out there.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I believe you're still up.
I am, and I was wondering if you want me to go sit back down and get back up, or just stay up here?
You don't chase cows, so no, you don't need to do that.
I'm good with that.
This is about paving?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the arena, the livestock arena has three tiers. In the original plan, the first tier, all the way down, was supposed to be heavy duty, that, or part of it was supposed to be heavy duty, for trucks and trailers that are carrying livestock, carrying heavy equipment, to go down there to, so it wouldn't mess up, bless you. So the two tiers at the bottom were supposed to be crushed gravel. We actually put it in this year, or this next fiscal year's budget, to have those paved. Since the person was actually out there, looking at it, he actually gave us a better price to go ahead and pave it. So what we were looking with the budget amendment, it's gonna save us about $10,000 to go ahead and do it, bring it out of fund balance currently, and then Mr. Lucas and Mr. Henson are gonna take it out of next fiscal year's budget, and go ahead and get it done now, while he's out there, so we don't bring another company in and have it done.
What company?
Rusty Russell.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Another local contractor.
A local contractor. He's a great guy. Joe McManus was also a person out there, but both of them, if I'm not mistaken, both of them are local. But Rusty was already doing the grading and the paving for the top, and, or Mr. Russell, excuse me.
Rusty Russell does a great job.
Yes, he does.
And I'm thanking you for getting someone local.
Oh, yeah, he's-
Other questions, comments? Do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move to approve the budget amendment to complete all of the planned paving at the new livestock arena facilities in fiscal year 2324.
Do we have a motion, Commissioner Crump? Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Hatley. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
If you chase a cow, at least it will be running on pavement.
If I chase a cow, I'm videoing it, I promise you that. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a wonderful night.
Okay, next on the agenda is department head presentation, Soil and Water Conservation District. The presenter is Amanda Kirby, Soil and Water Conservation Director. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you? All right. So my name is Amanda Kirby. I am the district manager for Stanley County Soil and Water Conservation District. I have been in this position for about seven years. So I just want to talk to you about what we do in soil and water. So we'll start with... Oh, no, my history slide is gone. I don't know what happened to it. Okay, so I'm just gonna tell you a little history about soil and water. So Soil and Water actually started, it was born right here. And when I mean that, I mean Stanley, Anson, Union Counties. So it started, it was born of the Dust Bowl in the 1930s by a guy named Hugh Hammond Bennett. He went before Congress to talk about soil loss from the plains in the Midwest. I don't know if you remember in history class, there was all that wind, there was soil flying up in the air. He went before Congress and said, "Hey, this is a problem. We have to fix this." And he was, he had a dramatic entrance. He opened the windows and said, "Look at the dust. Hey, can you please approve this law, so that we can fund reduction of soil loss in our agricultural land?" I don't have it in front of me. I think it was the Soil Conservation, it was a law passed in 1937 to fund soil conservation. So that started right here. Now, every county in North Carolina is covered by a Soil and Water Conservation District. All right, so how do we do that? And so we are, Soil and Water Conservation District is, actually, I was out of my, I'm sorry, I'm missing three slides. But our Soil and Water Conservation District is led by a board of elected, generally elected members. So every general election, you'll see someone on there, and it'll say Soil and Water, Soil and Water Commissioner, or, yeah, board member. And you might not know who that is. Those are my generally elected bosses. We also have two appointed members of our board. They make all of the decisions of where the conservation dollars go in our county. So how do we do that? We do it through something called agricultural cost share, which is state-provided funds administered at the county level. There are, there are three different main funding levels, and they are called agricultural cost share, which focuses on water quality, agricultural ag rap, which focuses on water quantity, and crep, which focuses on water quality and easements. What does that mean? That means we help put best management practices on agricultural land. We reimburse the cost for the landowner of up to 75% of the cost. So what are best management practices? These are scientifically-backed practices that have gone through trials that show that they reduce soil loss and soil erosion. They focus on non-point source pollution. If you don't know what that is, it is the opposite of point source pollution. So it's any kind of pollution that we can't point right at and say, "Hey, this is what is causing our water quality to go down." So if you are changing your oil or something out on your driveway, and it falls all over the driveway, you don't clean it up, a rain event comes through, gets brought to the stream, that's non-point source pollution. When it comes to agricultural land, that's gonna be like excessive fertilizer use, pesticide use, animal waste, and, once again, soil loss. We also increase water quantity and reduce impacts of non-point source pollution from non-ag land. So I'm just gonna go through a couple of our best management practices that are pretty popular here in Stanley County. The first one is livestock exclusion. So as you can see here, we have some cows hanging out in a stream. Why don't we like that? That is because, well, if we look at two different perspectives, we're gonna look at the farmer's perspective and our perspective as conservationists. So for a farmer, the cow's hanging out in a stream, they're, they're going to the bathroom in the stream, and then they're drinking the same water. So there's a chance that they're gonna get sick. That means that they are not gonna be full weight when they go to market, and that's a loss to the farmer. They may also, most streams actually also have a larger stream bank, so that they break their legs going in and out. And so a cow that can't walk into the market can't be sold. What we are concerned about is the water quality issue. So when we, when they're in there going to the bathroom, that's hurting the animals that are dependent on that water, right? So we fence, we help pay for the fencing out of the streams, and then we put in a well and drinkers throughout the field for the cows, so they don't have to walk more than 900 feet to get fresh, clean water, and so they're not walking off their weights. So that one's pretty popular in this county. This is the one that I probably fund the most. This is called cropland conversion. So what I see a lot of recently is that people are buying smaller tracts of land of, that used to be cropland, and they want to convert it into usually a cow-calf operation. So we help with the cost of converting it from like corn wheat, corn wheat-soybean rotation to permanent grass. Why, why does that work for water quality? So if we have the ground constantly covered by grass, then we are lowering a compaction, where the tractors aren't driving back and forth and compacting the soil. It's increasing the organic matter for the worms and the different, different animals that are dependent on that soil ecosystem, and it increases plant-available nutrients. So that is one of the ones that we're funding the most. This is like, every other slide is not on here. I'm not sure. Okay, that's weird. Okay, ag rap, this is our water supply, our water supply cost share. So this is very popular with usually new and beginning farmers. So this is water supply to usually small vegetable, or not, yeah, small produce farmers that are usually using like their own home well, or they're using county water. And so it's not as dependable when it comes to watering their produce. We have also funded them for some cow-calf operations, but it's more popular with the small vegetable. Okay, so this is prescribed grazing. This is something that is tied in with the livestock exclusion. So this is a plan to move the animals from one paddock to another to keep, to keep the animals eating fresh grass at different, different times. I'm sorry, this is just, this is not in, okay, this is not in order. But basically, so the idea of a prescribed grazing plan is, you work with the, with the farmer to decide where, how often they're willing to grow and move the animals around, and it allows some paddocks to have rest and be, and regrow and regenerate while they have, always have constant access to fresh grass. And as you can see on there, we have like a water facility in the center, so that's reducing their walking as well. One other thing that we offer in our office is a voluntary agricultural district. This is something that you guys have seen me up here for before. So this is a voluntary program for any bona fide farm within county, only within county limits, so if they're in the city limits, they can't apply for this. But this is a voluntary agreement for a landowner who wants to publicly define their land as farmland. And why, why would they want to do that? Basically, it is showing anyone who wants to come in and buy a house next to them, "Hey, this is farmland." With that, that means there's gonna be smells, there's gonna be noises, there's gonna be lights. You know that it's here before you move in here, so don't come in and be upset. So that is one of the major benefits that people are enrolling into the ag district. But there are other issues, other benefits include increasing ranking for the cost share that we provide, and they may also, instead of that 75% reimbursement, they can get 90% reimbursement on our cost share. I don't know. Okay, it doesn't have all of, let me also tell you about my, I have an educator in our office as well. She does environmental education. She has been there since last summer, and her name is Ginger. She works very well with our local schools. She has made great partnerships with the extension office- And, uh, she's actually started, um, partnerships with, uh, EU Adel and, uh, Oakboro STEM. And she has started some community garden plans out there. Uh, she works with all of the schools, talking about, um, environmental education, starting it at a, a young level and getting people interested in agriculture and how we can increase environmental quality within the county. And that is what I have.
Any questions of Amanda?
I just want to thank you for that. That's very, very informative. And we are agriculture here in Stanley County, so thank you for all you do.
I do have a question. How many cattle farmers approximately do you have that utilize the services?
Um, I don't know that I could give you a number. Um, I, see, my other slides did have, uh, the number of cost share.
You can get it to Tyler and she can pass it to us. But thank you. That is something I'd like to know. How, how many cattle farmers utilize your service?
Um.
Yeah, that's the question I've got.
I will say that I probably only can fund, when it comes to cow-calf operations, we are limited in our funding. Uh, we aren't like the federal, they get a lot more money. But we get, um, a livestock exclusion project can be anywhere between like thirty and fifty thousand dollars. So with what we get, we probably can only fund maybe one of those a year. Um, for cop, cropland conversion, depends on how much acreage it is, so I can usually fund like two or three of those. That's, you, those are usually anywhere between ten and, ten and twenty thousand dollars per project. Uh, so I'm really, cow-calf operations, I'm probably only working in four to five per year, specific with cost share funding. Now with, um, you're talking, if you're talking like, uh, enrolling in the voluntary Ag District or just technical assistance, that number's gonna be larger.
Are all these startup farms or?
It's a mixture.
It's a mixture.
Um.
So you can get the grant money or the money even if you hadn't sold anything yet or you had to have a track record?
Not if you haven't sold anything yet. So it does have to be, uh, it does have to be a bona fide farm. Meaning they have to either be in PUV, have a, um, have a tree manage, a forest management plan or have a Schedule F. So they do have to be by North Carolina Sanders bona fide farm.
Are these federal dollars that you receive?
These are not federal dollars, uh, but we do work closely with NRCS, which is a federal agency in our office who has a similar program.
Where do you get your money?
It comes from the state. It, it's a, it's, comes down from the state. There's a.
So the bulk of your money comes from the state?
Yes.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you for your presentation, Amanda.
Thank you.
Number eight, Library Board of Trustees Appointment. Presenter is Commissioner Brandon King. Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I think I've got the answers that we were looking for on the previous night that we've had this pushed off. I have the director here tonight to, uh, help me with this. So Sarah, if you would, step on up, please. Director Sarah Hahn's here and, and she can, uh, fill us in on some of the things that her board's looking for and what they have in mind. For the, uh, this will be for the term limit to finish out Ms. Poole's term.
Yes, so I believe the question has been answered about, have you addressed the answer about the conflict of interest?
Go ahead and we.
Okay, so, um, I was not present at the previous meeting, but from what I understand, there was a question about Robin Davis, one of the applicants being, um, having a conflict of interest whether or not she's trying to purchase the property of the Norwood Library. Um, and after some investigation from our county attorney and, uh, more discussion, it appears that it would not be a conflict of interest. Um, she would just need to recuse herself from any votes about anything that could be a potential, um, investment or financial interest or gain for her, um, if there was a vote of any kind for that. Um, with that, the discussion, uh, I believe carried for the pleasure of the board to elect Nancy Deek as the new, um, to fill the vacant position. And that was just general consensus based on all of the applications. And they said that they felt that she had a very well-rounded application. She has served on the Friends Board in the past, um, for several years. She's a current member of our Friends of the Library Board. We see her at a lot of events. She participates in a lot of our fundraising activities. And so we feel like she has a, a very invested interest in things that are happening countywide with all of our library systems. Um, and as a retired teacher and member of the education community, we just felt like she would be a really great choice for the board.
You, you say that's your board recommendation?
Yes, would be for Nancy Deek to be voted.
Any questions? Other questions? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, appoint Ms. Deek to the board on recommendation of Director Hahn.
Have a motion, Commissioner King, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Crump, second the motion. Any other discussion before we vote?
Yeah, I just, I think you got a couple of good candidates here and I would just like to nominate Robin Davis.
Okay. Uh, Robin Davis is nominee. Any other nominations? Each commissioner has one vote. And, uh, we'll do it this way. If you would like to see, uh, Missruse Deek as the board appointee, please raise your hand. Uh, Missruse.
Davis.
Missruse Davis, raise your hand. Missruse Deek.
Thank you.
Five votes. Thank you.
Like I said, that was a good, good situation to have when you have two good candidates.
Next on the agenda, number nine, is the Partner Behavioral Health Board Appointment. Presenter is Andy Lucas, County Manager.
Yeah, thank you. This is, huh. Thank you, Mr. or Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, Commissioner Effer's term on the Partners, uh, Behavioral Health Board will end actually this June, on June thirtieth. And he's agreed to serve again if reappointed. And so that's the, uh, the action item for you this evening.
Is Commissioner Effer willing to serve, you say?
According to this discussion and, uh, when Tyler put this agenda item, he, at that time, he was, he was. Now, it could have changed between the time the agenda was printed.
I'm glad it, Commissioner.
I am. Honestly, that's a really good board and it's really interesting, you know, especially the foster care programs. Uh, we have probably, uh, twelve county catchment area, uh, from Forsyth to Burke. Um, so it's, it's really interesting. Uh, Iredale, uh, Cabarrus.
Union.
Union, yeah. So it's, it's really interesting board. We meet once a month on Thursday. Uh, right now we do it Zoom. Uh, if we had to go, they'd be in Hickory, but we've been doing Zoom. You can ask my wife. They, they always meet the week I'm on vacation at the beach, so I'm Zooming, uh, at the beach. So it's really interesting boarding and if, if it's the board's pleasure, I would be happy to serve again.
Thank you for your service. Uh, you, would some commission, would one of the commissioners like a motion that we appoint Mr. Effer, Commissioner Effer back to the board?
Second.
Well, we really don't need a second. But we, we appreciate it. We just need the vote. All in favor of Commissioner Effer and you can't vote for yourself, please raise your hand. Unanimous landslide vote there, Mr. Effer. Alright. Yeah, okay, thank you. Appreciate your, uh, time you spend with that board. Uh, next on the agenda is num, item number ten, Stanley Community College Board of Trustees Appointment. Presenter is, is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, you have a memo in your packet related to the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees and an appointment you need to make to that board. You actually have two existing appointments, but because of the legislation that was passed last summer, fall, um, you now have one appointment, huh, to that board. And so there are several applications, uh, for your consideration in the packet and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, County Manager Lucas? If not, please review the applicants within your packet. And I think Commissioner Shuto.
I'm making a motion we appoint Courtney Lisk.
Okay, and you nominate Courtney Lisk, okay. We don't need a second on these nominations. Uh, we'll do a vote here in just a minute. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Gerald Effer.
Okay, got Gerald Effer nomination. Uh, anyone else? Okay, so we have, uh, Courtney Lisk and we have, uh, Gerald Effer as nominees. And let's take Courtney Lisk. If you're in favor of Courtney Lisk, please raise your hand. Okay, there's five. If you're in favor of Gerald Effer, please raise your hand. Two. So Courtney Lisk has been put back on the Stanley Community College Board. Thank you.
Yes. Uh, yeah, and that term is for, that's a, for a four-year term from July one to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-eight.
Yeah, and for those that don't realize that Courtney was, uh, approved to finish the term, uh, yeah, Kathy Burr, I think you've been on, uh, maybe six months now. And this will be a four-year term, so. Okay, let's go to the next, uh, item. It's number eleven, opioid settlement funding, Open Hands, North Carolina DBA, UHRI. And the presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Um, this item was actually tabled from your May thirteenth meeting. Um, since that time, um, U R E Harm Reduction, Open Hands, um, had put forth a proposal to, um, limit their, um, syringe exchange program and visits, uh, to twenty syringes each week, uh, or each visit for forty a week. Um, and, and keep in mind, the syringe exchange program is funded with non-county dollars. The, the, uh, the request that they made was for opioid settlement funding of seventy-nine thousand fifty-five dollars that would go towards peer support. Um, they also said that they would continue to strongly encourage more syringe returns and bring the numbers as close as possible to even. Um, also, they proposed moving the current syringe exchange service from the neighborhood where they currently do it at a church, uh, in that neighborhood, um, sort of behind the gun shop there on West Main. Um, and moving that, uh, to a, a mobile, um, syringe exchange program where they would, uh, and they've asked for maybe, uh, the county to loan them a, uh, an old scusa bus and use that as a mobile place and do that in a couple of different locations, uh, whether that be here at the Commons, uh, for a couple hours one day a week or maybe at, um, some other nonprofit that works with, um, those, those populations, but not necessarily do it at a fixed location in a neighborhood. They also proposed to continue to build relationships with other agencies, uh, intending monthly, monthly meetings to collaborate. Um, again, their proposed, uh, opioid summit funding would be utilized to support one full-time and two part-time peer support personnel um, that engage with these folks when they come to U R E Harm Reduction, uh, to try to help those folks move towards, uh, sobriety and, uh, getting themselves into treatment, uh, to help move them from being in, or, um, um, dependent on, um, in, individuals into being independent. Um, and so the request is to review and consider approval of U R E Harm Reduction's opioid settlement funding request with the additional stipulations related to their separately-funded needle exchange program. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions?
Andy, I think Bob's here, Harmon, and he's got some.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you, you all can talk to.
Mr. Harmon, would you like to come up and talk with us? Any different than what County Manager Lucas just stated?
Let me get up here. Thank you for having me here again. Uh, that's what we talked about last week and we'd like to see if that would be something that would be as a compromise with the county commissioners with what we've done. We're trying to make sure we continue serving these folks that are truly struggling. Our peer support staff, I mean, they are so important as a link to get these friends of ours into rehab and to detox and to other programs where they can move ahead. We've had a strong success rate with folks that have come back from detox and getting their lives built. And that's what we would like to have our peer support to continue. Again, this is a separate funding than what the other one is that y'all have, they, uh, y'all don't particularly want us to do. That's what we, we like what we were put to get here. I talked to past, to, uh, Commissioner Hatley about this last week and, uh, but we're wanting to continue whatever we can do, especially our peer support staff. We'd hate to lose them. They are strong individuals. They're the best staff we've had in the four years we've been here.
I guess my question, you gonna continue, continue the, uh, needle exchange?
Well, it's called a needle exchange, but it's not. It's syringe services is what it is. Uh, that's what we would like to do, yes. Uh, we are, if, if, but if it comes down to us.
We've got one vote. We're not gonna, we're not gonna negotiate.
No, I'm gonna say we can, we are willing to, to stop the syringe services for this fiscal year and not do that and just do the, the, uh, peer support.
So is your request to do the peer support but no longer offer syringe?
If, that's what we like to do for now and do that, you know, yes, that's what we'd like to do is, as of June thirtieth, we would no longer do syringes.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Yeah, why would you do away with syringe services if it's an effective program? I know it's getting long. My, my question, go, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I under.
No, I think there's a, maybe I get this question. I think a lot of people think that and maybe that the only people coming to get syringes are the homeless people living downtown. And I assume there's people coming in in cars and houses and everything else. That, that gamers are mostly just the people who are homeless living on the streets.
Of the people we serve, there's about nineteen of them that we consider chronically homeless. When it come, when we looked at this today and started it and it didn't sound like we had a chance of getting the votes, be able to keep it, but how important our peer support staff is, these people are, they, they put their hearts into it to work with them. If I've got to push this aside, I'll keep them to do it now. I don't know how it's gonna affect the numbers that come in. And I don't know how it's gonna, I, I know it would probably not affect number of syringes on the street very much with us not doing it. Because they're still gonna be out there, but they just won't be anything we've done. We get back, the, the percentage we get back is among the highest in the state. It's a percentage of, of syringes we get back in our program.
What percentage is that?
We get a close, a little over sixty-three percent back.
So for every syringe you hand out, you're getting sixty-three percent syringes back?
Out of ten, out of a hundred, we get sixty-three back is the way that would run on that. But, but all of those that don't come back are not necessarily on the street. We give out syrines, such safe syringe boxes that they put them in. Now, they can be thrown away in the trash. They can be, because they're safe to do it that way. And a lot of them happen. And we do have some, I know that, you have some people out there that just don't care. And we understand that too, but that's a very small percentage of the people we work with. We wanna be able to serve them, but if it takes getting rid of the people, if we got rid of our, uh, peer support like you, like y'all have discussed on this thing, we're becoming what people think we are. We're just giving out syringes, here you go, see you next time. We don't wanna be that. We wanna be responsible with how we're working with them. We wanna be able to continue that.
So what, so whether you, I'm gonna interrupt you. So whether you get the seventy-nine thousand dollars from the county, if you don't get it, you're gonna keep doing the syringe?
We have the funding for that, yes.
And where does that funding come from?
It comes from a, main part of it comes from a group called Vital Strategies. It comes out of New York. They work with people that have a matching funds on this.
Where, their money?
Pardon me?
Where do they get their money?
I do not know, sir.
Uh, it's the Bloomberg Foundation?
Bloomberg.
Bloomberg?
Bloomberg.
Okay. I think.
So my question too is how many people drive up to get their syringes that live at homes? Or how many people do you serve a week with the needle changes?
On each day, we have between around seventeen. We generally have, on each day, we have between around 17 to 20 on a Tuesday and a Friday. It's about how many we have. Sometimes a little bit less, but not many more than that often. And we also have people that are using prescription, uh, insulin and things, that we do give syringes out to them, we will also cease giving those out too. Not because we want to, but we know how important it is to have these peer support personnel working with these as they're trying to get sober and everything. We just want to do as much as we can. We don't want, you know, I don't want to be what we've been accused of being, and that's what we would become. And that just does not interest me, where you're just not trying to get them back to sobriety, you're not trying to get them to rehab, you're not trying to get them detox, not able to take them to those places because we don't have the staff to do it.
Mr. Harmon?
Yes?
If y'all cease to do the syringe program, what's the likelihood that somebody else will come in immediately and start?
Percentage wise, I'd say fairly high, because they could, they could come in easily and do it. Um, and, but they would just come in like a mobile unit, like we were discussing on that thing, on the proposal that Mr. Lucas mentioned. They'd come in, do them, and leave, and they'd probably come in once a month, like, well, they probably, how many do you need? And they'll say, well, I need 100, here you go, and they leave. That's the way, that's the way they generally work, because they only come in once every week or so, and they'll give out whatever numbers the people say they need, and that's happened in other counties that goes.
What's that number, do you think it would be?
Um, excuse me?
What's the number of syringes do you think that they'll give out max?
They would, well, like, well, we mentioned C H A. I'm sorry.
We have had meetings with Queen City Harm Reduction before. Um, they just wanted to see our operation, to see if they could model some of their, um, peer support stuff like we have, because we have done very well here in Stanley County. Um, the woman that came in that day gives out cases of syringes, and she does them out when she comes in with her mobile unit. They are not limited at all. She gives them to many of the drug dealers who then turn around and sell them to people to get their syringes, and they will get their syringes, they will get them. Um, we give out a, a lot of syringes. We get back 50, 63%, but that's a pretty good number. Um, we can probably tell you exactly who's throwing these needles down, and the majority of them are very mentally ill and very irresponsible. They're wandering around on the street, um, they're the people that rotate in and out of jail. Um, but the mass majority of our people are, are, do have homes, they have children, they have jobs, they're there because they need pain management. They need, they can't get what they need from their doctors any longer, but they have intense pain. Um, we help a lot of people, elderly people that just need that to function. Um, it's so much far-reaching than just these few people that are so mentally ill that are, they're, they're not as compliant as we would like, but we keep encouraging them. We do have people that I know throw their, throw their syringes, um, in the trash with their container. We do have people that have access to, uh, medical facilities, and they send their syringes there. For the amount of syringes that we give out, really and truly on the street, y'all found very few. Not that one is too mu, one is also too much, I understand that. I understand the concerns about children, I understand all this, but, you know, I, I just think that if we do have to give up, given the syringes, that your disease and other things that are gonna cost the county more in the long run by having to, um, pick this up with Atrium Health and so forth, it's gonna, it's gonna make a huge difference. Um, but I know, because I'm there every day, I'm there every day, at my hands own, I'm the director there. Um, but there are a lot of people that really depend on this that aren't throwing down syringes. They're not out, um, committing crimes, they're not in jail. They're just poor people that have a problem with pain, and they need, they need to use street drugs because their doctors will no longer give them, uh, the, the pain medicine that they need to survive.
Would you give us your name, so we can?
Yes, Gay Smith.
Gay Smith, okay. And you're a resident of Stanley County?
I am not. I live in Davison County.
So you drive down here every day?
I do, I, I, I love my folks, and I love, I love working with them. Um, I know that they have problems, they, we're in the trenches with them. We're, we're with their, down there with, in the trenches, but just, we've had mothers and daughters come in together, we've had fathers and sons come in together. Um, but they're, you know, they, it's just such a small handful that's throwing these syringes down, and I know the concern, and I understand that, but we help so many more people than just those few.
I'd like to ask, you said something about the people coming in that, uh, can't get pain medication from their doctor, and who provides the pain medication?
Um, they buy it off the street, they're using fentanyl now. Um, and that's scary. Um, we also have a new drug out there called Xylazine, which, um, does not, is not affected by Narcan. And it causes the big boils and sores and has caused amputations and other things. Um, we try to catch folks that are in that situation, get them to wound care as quick as we can. So they're finding now that they can use clonidine to, uh, attach to those alpha receptors, so they're not doing as many amputations as they were when it first came out. But it is in Stanley County. Um, they come in, I ask them, I give them the Xylazine strips, and I ask them, have you had any positive Xylazine? Yes, and they're telling me. So it's, it's, Xylazine is here in Stanley County, does not respond to Narcan. Um, that's gonna be, uh, the next big drug that's gonna come out and be prevalent on the street. Um, that I've used as a, a tool, you know, maybe it's time for you to go through detox, maybe, you know, maybe you don't need to do this anymore. But it's because they've maybe been, I had a lady, she's, I actually got, um, the transdermal nerve problem that affects your face, it's very, very painful. She, um, her doctor cut her off from OxyContin that she'd been using, and she had to go to, um, a street drug, and she says, it's not working. Um, I, there's so much sadness out there. If y'all could just spend a little time in my facility and see what I see every day, you'd have such a different perspective on what we're doing. It's not the needles, the needles are a carrot to get people in there so that we can keep them safe, give them safe supplies, and then, you know, try to help them get to detox and rehab to better their life. But it's, it's, I know the handful that throws the needles down are very bad and very troublesome, um, and we keep working with them, uh, to try and encourage them not to do that. But, um, it, it's a much more far-reaching, uh, situation than I think the board realizes in the fact that it's, it's a lot of people here in Stanley County that have opioid problems. Yes.
It, it's not really a question as much as it is a statement. Um, I don't like the needles no more than anybody else does, but the needles are one thing, like you said, it's a carrot, but if you do away with the, the peer support, and you let somebody else come in from out of county that just, you know, are not willing to work with us like you guys are, from what you had said here on the, uh, stipulations or whatever, I, I'm afraid you're just gonna open up floodgates, um, for those things. And again, i- if you have to deal with a situation where there be drug dealer, or, or drugs, or alcohol, you'll do anything in the world you could to help if it was a family member.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, um, U R E Harm Reduction fiscal 2425 opioid settlement request, uh, with the stipulations related to the separate funded needle exchange program.
Which would include continued needle exchange program?
Yes, sir, with the limits, syringes, uh, continuing strong encouragement, remove the current syringe services, and continue to build relationships.
And, and I get it, I, I hate the needle part of it, but it, it, you guys were willing to work with us, and if you get a company out of, I, I just say Charlotte or somewhere, that's just gonna give you cases and cases and cases, that problem's just gonna get worse.
Absolutely.
That's, that's my motion, sir.
I second it.
Hey, we have a motion and a second, and you folks, if you would like, you can have a seat, cause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a first and a second. With the stipulations that County Manager Lucas went over, uh, which would continue the syringe exchange program. Other questions?
I have a question. So, um, what's stopping another company, uh, like in Charlotte, from coming down here now? They, someone could take a mobile unit now and continue to do this, but they're not doing it. So, I'm not sure.
That's a question. Can, can anybody else come while y'all are now providing the syringe service?
I, I'd like to answer that. Syringe service programs are required to register.
Thank you. Um, syringe service programs are required to register with the state, so the state has a list of everybody that is providing those services. Um, there's not a need for another group to come in if we already have folks doing syringe service program, so it would be very unlikely that another group would open up. There's nothing stopping them from doing that, uh, common courtesy. Um, most of these people that working with syringe service programs, um, know each other and, and talk to each other, because they do some technical support, and they work with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, because this is a, um, an approved strategy for opioid settlement funds. So they, they're kind of all working together in the same space and know each other. It's not really a, a cutthroat, you know, nobody's really trying to get in here to offer this service.
It's my understanding, you correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a bill that passed that allows this in 2018, is that correct? 16?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I have a concern. I was actually contacted by a tax-paying citizen in the county who, whose family member utilized y'all's service with the syringes, when they eventually, he had two small children in the house. When they eventually got him out, he had over 1,000 syringes in the house that he got from you guys, and they were very upset with the county, which we have nothing to do with, but they were very upset with us as county commissioners for allowing that to happen. So even besides the needles on the street, which that, you know, is a separate issue, you're not taking account for what's going back to these people's houses, or staying in the houses with their children, running around the houses for innocent children that could get their hands on this, and I know that can happen anywhere, but if we get a, a dirty needle in a house that still has little drugs in it, and a child gets a hold of it, I mean, I just think we're opening ourselves up. And secondly, if we do a mobile unit, and the county provides a mobile unit, we're not providing mobile units to any of the churches to go around, pick people up to take them to church. I mean, how do we say it's okay for the county to fund that? I mean, we're gonna pay for that out of the taxpayer dollars. So, I mean, I will never agree with that. I mean, I understand what you're saying, somebody else can come in, and, and that's a, a bridge we'll have to cross when we get to it, I think, but I'm not willing to take that vote.
Other comments, questions?
Again, I, I totally understand that, but I think those needles are gonna be there. And, and I, I want to reiterate that I don't like it, I don't like it at all. But I'm afraid that if you don't do something with that peer support, and again, the, the needles are gonna happen whether we approve this, this funding or not. Again, I'm just afraid if you don't do it, and you say, okay, we're gonna quit, soon as you hear the word that we're gonna quit doing that, you know, I would about bet there's gonna be another organization that comes in that has no control over it. Again, guys, I'm not condoning drug use or anything, I just, I just think that, you know, we need to help folks where we can, and if it was a, a needle, the program where we didn't fund that, I'd be all on board. But if the peer support is gonna put you in front of them.
Mr. Chair?
I, I, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner, but my conviction is we're, by supplying needles, and I don't care if it's a law or not, if we're supplying syringes, I'll call them syringes for what they are, we're enabling drug addicts to continue to use. That's the way I see it, and it really concerns me.
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. I would just, I was just gonna say that if this motion fails, um, I will in turn make a motion to support, uh, the $79,000 to the organization if the needle exchange is ceased on June 30th. So.
I got a question about, that Wendy can answer, the public health implications of the, the health of why they'd have clean, why, why clean needles are important.
Um, sure, um, some of the things that we're concerned about from a public health perspective are bloodborne pathogens, hepatitis C, uh, HIV, syphilis. Um, we do have a group that comes in and tests for those, for people that are using, um, intravenous drugs at their facility so we can get people into treatment. Um, also endocarditis and other, um, blood diseases that come from the, uh, injection of drugs, so.
Thank you.
Just got through, that lady mentioned that this needle program or syringe program, it's allowing these people for pain medicine that comes off the street. Uh, you know, I know a lot of this stuff, opioids is one thing, but when you start getting pain medicine off the street just to cure your pain, it's gonna kill you too. I gotta, I don't know, and I've been wrestling with this quite a bit, and, uh, I just can't, my heart supports something, the needle thing may be good, and who knows? You know, we may be doing it again if we quit now, I don't know, but, uh, I just got a real problem. I, I just can't make myself do it.
Mr. Smith, is there anything that you could add that could ease our minds about the amount of needles, excessive needles, or, that are on the street, or?
We've got a motion on the floor.
I don't know what to tell you, because I've been through this same struggle about the needles, and how difficult it, it's decision it is to pass those needles out. But when you weigh not only the health of the individuals, but also the, the money that it saves the county, and the overdoses that y'all had before, because we also, we're instructing, we're trying to educate our people that come in about the dangers of drugs and about the Xylazine, and, and how to use the Narcan. Um, I, I just, I feel like, I, I know you're talking about the enabling part, but we also try to give them the other safe pieces and parts that they need. If you had somebody that had 1,000 needles in their, in their house with their two children, obviously those two children needed a better place to live. Um, we, I don't know what to tell you. I just know that, um, we do help people stay healthy, that does save the county money, if we're talking money, I'm talking lives. Um, I want to see these people go through detox and rehab and change their life. Um, I don't want to see them get hepatitis C or HIV, or especially endocarditis. One case of endocarditis costs enough to probably buy the Narcan for this whole state. It's expensive. Um, I, I know where you're at, I know where you're at, but I also know that this saves lives and that, um, I don't know if you saw the graph that Wendy Grocock had worked up in your packet about the 53 lives it was estimated that we had, that we have kept from, from dying with our program, uh, keeping them safe. Um, and, and the amount of money that was attached to that, if we want to talk money. Um, we're always gonna have those folks that are not compliant, that are gonna throw their needles down, and as much as we try, we'll continue to try and encourage them to use the, the, um, this, the Sharps containers and to bring them back, but, you know, it's really not, I don't know, each one of you is gonna have to search your heart for that.
How many needles do you think you could get your numbers back up to? You think you could get to 85%?
I think we can try, we can, we'll keep working on it, but I'm tell, I, I know for a fact that a lot of people do just tape them up, tape up the boxes and put them in the trash. They've told me that's what they do. And I also know that, because that's legal, you can legally do that, that, you know, you can legally do that. Um, and I do. And I do know that there are folks who say, well, my mom works at the hospital. I just give them to her and she takes and throws them away. So, we will never get 100% back. And that doesn't account for those people with mental health issues because you're, they're never gonna be compliant with anything. And, you know, the best thing we can do is get them into Monarch. Rehab's are great, but they fall short in the fact that they treat the addiction. But if they have mental health issues involved in that, they have to unpack those mental health issues to become a whole human being again. And most of the time, people who use drugs are either doing it because they can't get their pain medicine. And these are a lot of elder, I have a lot of elderly people that come in and get syringes because of the pain management. And it's because they've had trauma or mental health issues. Those are the three reasons that people end up with us. And, you know, it, it's an uphill battle. I wish I could say that in two years, we would have everybody clean and healthy and we could put this all aside, but you know, you just have to.
Wait, question for you.
Yes.
From what you just said, you said within two years, you'd love to have everybody clean, which I think everybody would agree with that.
Absolutely.
In the last, in the last 12 months, how many have you been successful getting to Monarch or to a rehabilitation center?
We have gotten about probably 63, 70 people to rehab and that does include Monarch. One of our peer supports used to work at Monarch. He is no longer working there. He's your, he happens to be, one of the peer supports that we're talking about happens to be one of the lead peers on your spare program in the jail. The other peer support that we're talking about funding works with the SUN Project, which I don't know if you're familiar with the SUN Project. They are out of Cabarrus County, but they work with women who are pregnant with, and have substance abuse issues. And she is the, own the steering committee for that, for Stanley County. These are the two peer support people that y'all are talking about eliminating if you don't vote for them. And they are very important to Stanley County, not just to my organization.
So, the 63 people, is that since y'all have been in operation or is that?
That's this year.
This year?
This year.
So, how many people do you, you all have participating with all the services that you offer?
I would say we have, we have over 300 people on our roll that are signed up in the syringe service program.
Do you have just a small nucleus of those that come often for needles or is it?
We have a very small nucleus that come more than once a week. Most of them come once a week. We have some, of course, we've lost some to overdoses, but we have, exactly how many do we have, Bob, on our roll?
It was 360, but that goes back four years. A lot of those have been left, that's a total, some have left the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably actually, I think it was 130 active.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions before we, we've got a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I, I don't wanna lose the peer support of this, so I will withdraw my motion.
Commissioner Shudo, you gonna withdraw your second?
No.
Are you gonna make it a first then?
I'm gonna make it, I'm gonna make it a first and hopefully I get a second because this is a program that they're, these folks are in the trenches. And it's almost like, are we not dealing with reality? They're, they are dealing with reality. And they're doing the best they can and that serves as a carrot to get people there. And, you know, there's this fear of the needle exchange program. And then if there's nobody here servicing this area, we're working with these folks that are willing to compromise, then all of a sudden, yes, someone else can come in there now, but these guys have the contacts. So, then someone comes in with a mobile unit that's not getting any other money or anything. So, they, they wouldn't even need to come to us about anything. You know, and also statistically, this works better than just prayer. These folks are combining prayer with the syringe services. And I applaud y'all for being down there on a regular basis, just, just working with people and trying to do the best you can because also in addition to the people who are addicted, you have family members who are not addicted, they're not on anything, but all of a sudden you can get, they get a disease by cha, exchanging needles and that spreads to other public health things. It's a public health issue, so I'm gonna keep the motion or make the motion. Hopefully we have a second.
I'm gonna consult with the attorney. Scott withdrew his first.
I think that's fine, Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Shudo wants to.
Make a first, make, convert his to a first motion. Okay. Do we have a second?
I think we've got a group that's willing to work with us. There's been some mistakes made, no doubt. None of us are perfect. I'd like to see us keep this thing going and work with them. And I think they'll work with us because I think we're, we're opening ourselves up to something that, that could come in that we can't control at a later date. So, I'm gonna make a, I'll go with Peter.
Second, okay, second, Commissioner Hatley. Any other discussion before we vote? All right, the vote will be what's listed in your agenda packet, which would be $79,055 for the year 2425 to fund peer support personnel. And it would also limit syringe service clients' funding with non-county or opioid settlement funds. It's opioid settlement funds for 20 syringes each visit or for a total of 40 per week. And we would continue to strongly encourage more syringe returns because when I heard 63%, that's a lot because up until tonight, I was thinking very few were giving back. That's kinda what, the way you relate it. Sometimes zero is given back and we give out syringes. So, I'm very surprised at 63%. We would continue to build relationships with the other agencies by attending monthly meetings. Mr. Harmon, are you willing to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the proposed opioid funding will be utilized to support one full-time and two part-time peer support personnel. That's the motion. So, all in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. Those opposed, please raise your right hand. Or opposed, motion fails. And I think Commissioner Crump had an opportunity or wants an opportunity to make a different motion.
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we support the recommended $79,055 for URE harm reduction in the fiscal year 2425 to fund their peer support personnel with the contingency that the syringe program is ended June 30th.
Do we have a second to that motion? Commissioner King, second. All right, any discussion before we vote on this one?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Commissioner Eifert.
So, when we get an email from a parent that is mad at us about finding needles on playgrounds and stuff, who do we refer that to?
Who do we refer it to now? I'm not sure.
I would say that if it was inside the city limits of Alton, you would not refer that to the city of Alton. Is it, we fund peer support, we don't fund anything else and out there contractual, they'll have a contract with us. One against my own. Sorry. They'll have a contract with us that'll be contingent on them not providing that service. And so, if they are providing that service, then their funding would cease. And so, if there was a complaint about a needle, we would have to refer that to the city's solid waste and their law enforcement or whatever, because that'd be, it'd be outside of our jurisdiction. Wouldn't be anything we would have any control over. And obviously, we're not funding that agency that's providing that type of service. So, it's, would be, so.
Yes, sir.
I go to a church. We followed that protocol for three years. It's done nothing. So, I'm, I'm not excusing what you said. I'm just telling you what, what we've seen in that protocol.
I just, I, I knew that, but I just wanted to get it out there. Thanks, sir.
Other questions? Let's vote. All in favor of continuing twen, funding 2425 for $79,055 for the items that I discussed earlier, with the exception of stopping the syringe program effective June 30th? Please raise your right hand. Motion, any opposed, like sign. Motion carries 7-0. So, the funding will continue for 2425, but it would eliminate the syringe program effective, or you all have agreed to eliminate the syringe program effective June 30th?
Yeah, our funding will be contingent on them not providing that service that's not funded by us. And so, if we get, you know, information that suggests that they're doing that, we'd have to research that and find out and then we would cut their funding if it, they were doing.
Thank you.
I, I have a question of the board. Can I ask a question? A short question, okay.
We would, we would like to still continue passing out the Narcan since that does prevent overdose and also the wound care kits and the other, not the syringes, but all the other things like the cookers that we recommend they use because they, they cook their drugs in there, but then we give them, they can throw it away and use a clean one so that they do not pass bacterial properties in their drugs because if they use the same cooker over and over and over, and I know years ago, they used to use spoons. Can we continue to give?
And I have no idea what a cooker is and don't wanna know what a cooker is.
I didn't know what they were either.
And you're, you're asking, we want you to stop the syringe program.
And the rest of the supplies and things are okay to continue?
The syringe program's what needs to stop.
Good, good. I didn't know what a cooker was either when I started this. I've learned.
And my wife used to cook.
Not that kind of.
She still does too.
Not that kind of cooking.
Okay.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do.
Yeah. Andy Lucas, County Manager, come talk with us about the design build general contractor.
Sir, I'm moving on to another subject. So, the design build general contractor approval. The county received two responses to our RFQ for a design build general contractor for jail and public safety facility expansion. After reviewing each firm's qualifications, key staff experience, local project experience, their proposed delivery method, understanding of the project objectives, it's recommended that Bordeaux Construction Company headquartered in Morrisville, North Carolina, be engaged as a design build general contractor. Bordeaux has completed projects, jail, law enforcement facility projects in Bladen, Durham, Granville, Harnett, Oak, Iredale, Johnson, Montgomery, Orange, Randolph, Sampson, and Stanley, and I'm sure there's others. They're done a lot of jail construction in North Carolina. They're very familiar with the, the laws of, of North Carolina in terms of how jails are constructed, the jail standards. And so, they're, they're a very reputable firm in that market. Bordeaux will enter into a due diligence contract with the county to master plan, program, and value engineer, prepare, design, and construction drawings, as well as cost estimates for the proposed jail facility expansion. Once complete with that, the county will amend the contract with a guaranteed maximum price for the construction of the jail facility and that obviously will come back to you. Once a negotiated price for the aforementioned scope of work is developed, staff will bring forth a budget amendment so the project fund can be amended to cover the cost of the planning and design phase of the project. It's anticipated the budget amendment will be presented at one of the board's upcoming work sessions in June. So, we'll work with, if you all approve Bordeaux as the design build contractor, we'll work with them to get their planning and design phase of this project, that, that, that number for us. We'll bring that back to you so that you can amend the project ordinance and project fund with those dollars to get the, the design and master planning associated. Because as we contemplate this jail addition, we also want them to look more comprehensively at where could a potential sheriff's office go? Our courthouse at some point is gonna need to be renovated, expanded, something of that nature. And so, we really want to look, we don't wanna be shortsighted in how we place this jail expansion. Really want some thought to be put into it so that we're really looking out 10, 20 years to make sure we're not, you know, hamstringing ourselves in terms of where, you know, what potential we have in the future. So, so it'll be important to kind of take a comprehensive look at our public safety facilities and then move forward with the design of a, and programming of a jail expansion where it's most appropriate so that you can expand in the future and be able to not limit other facilities in the future as well within that general footprint. And so, this comes to you as a recommendation from both the sheriff and I, who reviewed these proposals and interviewed the different firms. And so, I'll be, I wanna stop there and answer any questions the board may have.
Questions of County Manager. Don't hear any. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve Bordeaux Construction Company, Inc. as a design build general contractor for the proposed jail and public safety facilities expansion project.
Okay. Commissioner Reifert made the motion. Commissioner Hatley, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. A consent agenda, I think everybody's had plenty of time to review the consent agenda over the last four, four or five days. Need approval of the consent agenda? Need a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Comments from the board? And I'm gonna start with Commissioner Shudo.
Yeah, just on the URE harm, I think we're kinda handicapping their mission, but it is what it is. I'm glad at least part of it is still moving forward. And just a few positives here. The Wappas Catcher in season now and they're hitting the ball. They're getting like, what, 10 runs a game, first few games. Also down in Norwood, Juneberry Ridge is starting their Juneberry Jams. And if you have not been out there, that's a wonderful venue for an event. And on June 8th, that Saturday, they got Roger Dick's gonna be speaking about, something about farming, sustainable farming. And then the headliner is gonna be the Beatles For Sale, which is a headline, Beatles headliner group. So, that'll be pretty interesting. And then just give a shout out to the Williams Brothers and all those folks. I think there's a few other artists that are painting all these murals on the buildings in the county. It's really, really spruce this thing up, things up.
Thank you. Commissioner King. Commissioner Eifert.
I'm good, sir.
Vice Chairman Barbie.
She's gonna just hassle around a lot about this, that vote and I hope we did the right thing.
Commissioner Hatley. Commissioner Crump.
Just on the URE harm reduction vote, I would like to say that it was not an easy vote and everyone here made a very valid, made very valid points. I applaud you and I thank you for the work that you do, you know, in the trenches. And I hope we did the right thing as well. I had to vote my conscience and I also represent the people here who put me in this position. And I do believe that I'm. here who put me in this position. And I do believe that I'm representing the majority of the people in Stanley County.
Thank you. I would like to congratulate all the seniors from all the different high schools. I think we have about six high schools, I think, that are graduating or have already graduated and earned their high school diploma. I know many of them will go off to a four-year college, or either a community college, or some will go into the workforce. And all I've got to say about that is, I want you to do a good job working, because someday you'll be as old as me and Vice Chairman Barbie. And we'll need you to pay into the social security system. But I do congratulate you. I have a grandson who's graduating from Davie County High School, and I asked him how many classmates he had. They have over 400 seniors that are graduating on June 15th. They started school a little later than Stanley County. But congratulations, graduates. You've done a good job to earn your diploma and much success for your future. With that...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I say one more thing? My wife's giving me the evil look out there.
He looks hungry.
Yeah.
Commissioner?
A couple of weeks ago, Kerry's scholarship fund, we gave 10 $1,000 scholarships away to seniors at West Stanley, and that puts us up to 127,000. So I just wanted to mention that. And again, congratulations.
Okay. We're not going to adjourn. We're going to recess until June 5th at 4:00 PM for a budget workshop in the Josh J. Morton Jr. Conference Room here at the Stanley Commons. So with that, I hope everyone has a good night.